Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Eastchester April Meeting. Today is April 16, 2024. We start our meetings with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Just to briefly go over some of our ground rules, I always like to remind the viewing public that our calendar is printed the year prior, so people know when applications are due and when we meet. We generally meet the second Tuesday of every month, except for this month. So if anyone is considering an application, they should check our calendar. Additionally, we obey Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Order, which essentially mean that we act on motion and vote, and we make decisions based on resolution and vote. We don't accept any new correspondence after the close of a public hearing. And tonight, we have three matters that have been adjourned. I'm just going to mention it because they are lead agency. They're being held, heard elsewhere. That's the B Street subdivision, the 360 White Plains Road application, and the 249 Main Street and 27 New Street applications. Those have been adjourned. Now, our roll call tonight, we have board members Conway, Weber, Cahalan, and myself. Mr. Miller is not here tonight, so we have a four-member board. I also would like to make a motion at this time to approve the minutes of the March 12, 2024 meetings. There is a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go to our new business items, just on our resolution calendar, we have one matter, which is 190 Beach Street. So I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving application 24-03, 190 Beach Street. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application has been approved 4-0. Okay. We're going to go slightly out of sequence on our calendar of new business. And as previously mentioned, these applications have been marked submitted. All of the documents are now part of the public record, so applicants don't need to come in and read the application. I would ask you to summarize your application, and the board would then have an opportunity to ask questions. Public would have an opportunity to be heard, and the board would then be able to question, comment, or sum up. So we're going to start with item number three, which is 57 Locust Avenue. If the application would come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, board members. My name is Adama Maya-Rana from Community Designs and Engineering. We are proposing, well, this project, basically summarize it, was before you last year. Because of the time that has passed, what happened was the applicant, for family reasons, had a baby, so they couldn't start the project or didn't want to start the project after, you know, they got their approvals over the summer. So now that things are back in order, they want to start the project up again and would love to start over the summer. So we sort of just made the deadlines to go to ARB and planning and all that. So in summary, yes, they would like to utilize their second floor of the house more effectively, create more square footage. And right now, the existing house is not conforming with respect to the side yard setbacks, very minimal variances. It's about, you know, seven inches on one side, like three inches on the other. And again, we're just back here asking for reapproval of the same project that's, you know, has been before you last year.
Okay. I thank you for your presentation. Just one clarification. There has been no changes to the application. It's the same application that was approved March 2023.
Exactly, yep.
I'm going to go to the board for any questions or comments. Mr. Cahalan?
None.
Mr. Conway?
None.
Mr. Weber?
No.
I don't have anything. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearings. There is a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, because I have to. Mr. Cahalan?
No questions.
Mr. Conway?
No questions.
Mr. Weber?
No questions.
I don't have anything further. Can I ask you, gentlemen, to take that outside, please? So I don't have anything further. I've, again, for the same reasons it was approved last time, it beats the five-part test to my satisfaction. I make an application to resolve, I'm sorry, to come to a resolution at the next board meeting. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the second item, which is item four on the calendar, is Two Crosshoe Road. This is your application as well, Mr. Maya-Rana?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, Adama Maya-Rana, Community Designs and Engineering. We are proposing, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Ms. Martin, a new single-family residence at Two Crosshoe Road. This project, I'm sure it's sort of fresh in the memory, it has been before you in November. There was a set of, a group of variances that have been approved with respect to the gross floor area that has not. We are back before you with a decrease in size of the home. Again, just to quickly summarize, you know, how we're here, the applicant has, you know, very specific, sort of overall usage of the house, the size and dimensions of the room. So what we tried to do was try to decrease that as much as possible to still give the applicant those dimensions that he can sort of utilize this home for, you know, many years to come. So in essence, overall, basically, we shifted the house about a foot or so on one side, a foot or so in the rear, and we took out some square footage on the second floor. Overall, it reduces the house about 300 square feet. So that is, basically, we're at 388 square feet, 383, sorry, 3,880 square feet. Now, given that, I'll just go to the elevations. Not to say this in a bad way, but overall, maybe it may not seem that the house has changed all that drastically. That was one of the arguments we tried to sort of make the last meeting, that, you know, given the architectural features of the house, which we really tried to sit down and make sure that this house was conforming to the neighborhood and sat, you know, very nicely on the site. When you sort of do certain architectural features, as much as, you know, one and a half-story garage that is all the way to the left side of the site, that's nearest to a smaller home, sort of different gables, reverse gables on the front, and essentially, the porch is the number-one item that sort of brings the scale of the house down. There are some houses where, say, you maxed out the, you know, coverage and created a big, large box, that house can be, you know, 3,000 square feet, but may look like it's even greater than this. So there's certain architectural features that you can do, that we tried to do, to create the massing of this house down, just to go through sort of those areas. Again, there's also a lot of square footage that the applicant really wanted, a certain size of the garage, and you're only allowed 400 square feet that you could deduct in the overall square footage. So this garage is more than, it's about 650 square feet, so 250 square feet of that garage is essentially added into our overall square footage. If I go to what is sort of a little more important that we try to stress again, is the comparison to neighboring residents. So now, given that we're at a different floor area ratio, it's, the house is at 33.5%. So it is very much conforming to what we tried to, as best as possible, to find related size of homes within the vicinity of this, for what we can get from the building department that actually had, you know, zoning tables that were accurate, of properties, again, this is, you know, call it a double-sized lot, that relate to the square footage of our home. So sort of, you know, if we look, you know, down here, too brassy, it's 3,400 square feet, but the, you know, FAR is 35%. So almost every home with respect to, like, I think three of them, we are under what the neighboring percentage of FAR floor area ratio, given the house size to the site. Before, our number was great. We were on the higher end of the average. Now, we're just about, you know, almost under what the average is, given, you know, again, that respect to the size of the lot versus the size of the home, and essentially looking at, you know, the overall composition of the home. Some of these homes, you know, again, at Leven Hillery is 4,300 square feet. It almost looks, you know, because of three-car garage, again, you know, 5,000 square feet of 19 brassy, three-car garage, these houses almost look, you know, much bigger than ours, given the, you know, double-height entry foyer. Double-height entry foyer brings the scale of that house sort of a lot larger than, you know, what we're sort of trying to present today. I have so many notes that go on and on, but, you know, because they're, you know, really into the, yeah, I think that sort of tries to summarize where we're at today with this, you know, sort of proposed new dwelling. Again, you know, to stress the, you know, sort of ability to let this house fit in the neighborhood, you know, I believe that it truly does, given, you know, again, across the street is R 7.5 district. So in essence, you can build another 400 square feet, what we are allowed in the R6, you know, zone, and literally that is just across the street, so we'd be even asking for a much smaller sort of ass. The benefit, again, you know, decreasing this house a little bit, the other variances that have been approved have slightly, the percentage of them decreased. So we ask for those other variances are very, you know, okay, may not be nothing, but a very small percentage is lower. And yeah, gross floor, you know, again, that's really what we are essentially here today, trying to seek in this newly proposed home.
Thank you for your presentation. To the board, Mr. Cahalan, any comments or questions?
Questions.
Of course.
Well, no, on your plans, I could not match up your plans where you took the square footage out on the second floor.
Sure, yes.
Show me where you took it out.
Totally. So when you take, say, you know, the back of the house, say you take the entire back, you know, 75 feet, a foot in, that's 75 square feet, when we take the side, and then that's also double, you know, so it's on the first floor, there's, on the right side, the house shifted in, so you have two floors that, you know, call it 50 square feet, that's 100 square feet. A lot of the area, there was a large, again, the second floor is, with respect to the other one, is very small, you know, it's a three-bedroom, you know, second floor. So a lot of the area was the walk-in closet. There was a very large walk-in closet. Now it's shrunk a whole lot. The applicant would have loved a very large closet, but in this case, it's sort of just, you know, an.
So how much did you take out?
Here, I believe it was around 100 and like, I'd have to go through like the exact square, 170 square feet maybe on the second floor, just in the closet, and then another like 130 square feet, given the decrease in a foot in the back and a foot inside.
So basically, you really didn't decrease much?
Well, see.
Okay, I'm talking now.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So from a massing standpoint, the house basically looks the same on the lot. It does. I looked, I studied this because I live around the corner.
Of course.
The neighborhood has been in flux, building those homes that you're saying are all the same. I can show you, and I could come with neighbors that objected to most of those projects because of the massing of the homes. Okay? So let's put that out on the table. That said, you've designed a very nice house. I have no problem with your design, it's just you did not shrink the property. When we came, when you came here last month and didn't get your variance, you came back, and it's, to me, it's almost insulting that you took some square footage out of a closet and didn't think we were going to know. That's the feeling I get that I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, I would be completely clear, that's what I tried to explain, you know, how much square, what my main argument is, we can take probably another 300 square feet and the house almost essentially, you know, bring the back of the house in two feet. You'd never notice anything in the front, but essentially, okay, now the house is, you know, asking for a 400-foot, a 400-square-foot variance, but the massing of the overall house is almost the same. You know, again, moving towards, you know, what the neighborhood is, you know, every new house, you know, in the 50s and 60s, a lot of those homes, yes, they were smaller homes, they were, today, we are fortunate that, yes, we live in a great community, that these houses are, as you see, becoming bigger and bigger. But not with, I don't want to say that's where we should move to, that we should start building bigger homes. It's very rare that you have a double-sized lot where somebody wants to come in and just cut this house, subdivide.
Are you sure you're going to tell me the argument is, build this or get two houses?
Well, no, well, I wouldn't say that's the argument, but somebody would want to come in there, subdivide, and build two 2,500-square-foot homes. Now you have a 5,000, say, in essence, square foot of home on this lot, which I would say this would be more conforming to the area, given, if you look at a lot of those corner homes, those colonials are, you know, fairly large homes. Every one that you see on the corner, you know, 3,200 square feet, 3,500 square feet, they're fairly big homes.
Looking at, looking at your pictures, I know that most of those were by right.
So, yeah, so back when the area changed in 2004, I believe, a lot of these homes, like.
Well, that were, the two, the two up on the hill that are further up from you, okay, those are like McMansions. Those are smaller lots with massing, okay? Because they go, they're right up on the same side of the street, a block up, but they sit back closer to the park. The other one that you're showing, I believe it was all the way in the corner, okay, which is by Leewood Park, right?
This 18 Crosshoe. Yeah, yeah. So this one was built, I think, in 2003, when that zoning.
Was a little bit different.
In 2004, yes.
Right, but, you know, it's still, there's no getting away from it. It's a big house, and that's okay.
Sure.
I'm not saying that's not okay. What I'm saying is that you've got a double lot, and you're trying to get every inch out of it, and I appreciate that, but you can still have a big home here without taking, without this variance. You can still have a massive house.
You can, but it's also the benefit of having a large home that, in essence, doesn't read as such a big home as what we're.
I'm going to disagree with you. I walk up there and I've looked at that lot several times. The way that house is going to come up from where it is today, it's, you know, you're moving it back 30 feet from the curb, right? Right? Because that's the setback that you need. So.
Yes, the front porch.
Right, from the front, it's going to be 30 feet.
So, yeah, it's a 12-foot right of way.
Right, exactly. So.
Yeah, so we're at 37.
You're pushing the house out to start off with.
Sure.
Right? Right now, the house that's there, yes, it's smaller, it sits back, and I'm okay, I'm not saying that's not, you're taking advantage of the land area. All I'm saying is that, what's the square footage on this house? What you want?
3,800 square, and 80 square feet.
Okay, that's, that's a big house.
It's a big house.
Can we agree on that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, then I'll stop, then I'll stop asking my questions.
I know we could go back and forth all day. I mean, no disrespect, absolutely.
It's a big house.
It's a big house. I wouldn't say it's a massive house, that, you know, when you look at the best definition of McMansions, okay, are they around 3,000 to 5,000 square feet? Yes, you know, are there other homes much bigger? Would we want to go that big? Absolutely not, but we're, you know, again, we tried to do, you know, when we look at just, you know, sometimes when you're a numbers man, you look at just the numbers, no matter where it's taken out, it's 300 square. So we tried to get to a number that at least would make somewhat of a difference, not 100 square feet, not, but, you know.
But it's still 800. You're looking for your variance of 800 on, on this, on this thing, right? And to me.
Given all the arguments.
You didn't really, you shrunk the house a little bit, but you took the, you know, you took it out of a closet to get with the numbers, to make the math work.
Which, again, is.
Can we agree on it?
Yeah, yeah, but again, is the argument of, you can take square footage at somewhere, make the house, you know, again, I could take out the covered patio because that gives a lot of the gross coverage, right?
But that's something the homeowner wants.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get to, so if we maxed out the coverage and made a big square box of this house, it would almost read as such a bigger home. Made it 3,050 square feet, the home would almost read, and put just a massive attic on the second floor, but max out the entire footprint, more than what we can, no covered patio. We could essentially build bigger than here as of right, and it would almost read as a much bigger home, but that's not necessarily.
That's not where we are.
Yeah, but I would almost, I'd rather, you know, not max out, not have the cover, and build a huge attic than to do something of this nature that is a little more conforming to the homes in the area.
And there is a basement in this house?
There is, yeah. And also, you know, the house is very low to the ground. It's not like, you know, you walk up five, six steps, that was another thing, you know, you basically walk right out of the back, and the front, there's two steps. So we're, yes, we're, you know, close to that max height, which is, we go to the ridge, so a lot of these homes cannot be as high as you see, you know, some of the homes are back before.
Nothing further?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Maya-Rana.
I think you should stop talking.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Conway?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Weber?
No question.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Seeing nobody, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
I'll second that.
Second? Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan?
Spoke my piece.
Mr. Conway?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Weber?
Nothing for me.
I, I didn't think it was out of character the first time around, and I don't think it's out of character in the neighborhood this time around. Again, what you can do as of right, or what is, what can and cannot be done is not before us, before us now. We're looking at the actual application, and with some of the architectural features, I don't consider it out of the neighborhood, out of the character in the neighborhood at all, and certainly not a detriment. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. We have two more items on, which are items one and two, and we have an application by one of our board members before the applicant proceeds. Mr. Weber?
Yes, so the applicant's representative is currently working on my house, therefore I will recuse myself from these applications that he represents, and I will exit the meeting. So have a nice evening to all of you.
Yes, and I thank you for your high ethical standards. I appreciate it, and you're excused, as they say. I feel very school-like, I'm excusing you. Have a great month, and we'll see you next month. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Name and address for the record. This is 22 Douglas Place.
21.
Sorry, 21.
Good evening. My name is John Yadassito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Palumbo, the owners of the subject property. We are proposing a new in-ground swimming pool to replace an existing above-ground swimming pool at 21 Douglas Place. So here we have an existing site plan and a proposed site plan. Existing site plan showing the existing above-ground pool highlighted, and then the proposed showing the new in-ground swimming pool. So the scope of work will include removal of the existing above-ground pool and the wood deck that surrounds that pool.
Which is already done.
It's already done, yes, they did the demolition. The second thing is the construction of a new in-ground swimming pool. It'll be a panel pool with a vinyl liner, not a gunite pool. We're also proposing reconfiguration of the rear, of the patio at the rear yard, and removal of a portion of the existing driveway along the side yard here. We're going to remove the driveway here and reconfigure the paved area in the back around the swimming pool and remove the wood deck. The existing property is currently non-conforming with respect to the following zoning requirements. The first is the pool setback to the rear yard, which is currently 5 feet. The second is the pool setback to the principal building, which is currently also 5 feet, and it's also non-conforming with, in relation to the total impervious surface coverage. The proposed in-ground pool will replace the existing above-ground pool that was constructed over 30 years ago. The proposed pool will be constructed in the same area, the same location as the existing, and we're going to maintain the existing 5-foot setback to the rear property line. The new pool will be, is not as wide as the existing pool, so we are increasing the setback to the principal structure from 5 feet to 8 feet. And then the reconfiguration of the existing patio and removal of the driveway will reduce the total impervious surface on the property, and we're eliminating the non-conforming condition. So now we're going to be conforming to the coverage. So we're asking for two area variances in relation to the new pool. The first is the rear yard setback, where the existing and proposed are 5 feet, and the required is 10 feet, deficiency of 5, 5 feet or 50%. And the second is the setback from the pool to the principal structure, which is, the proposed is 8 feet and the required is 10, a deficiency of 2 feet or 20%. Okay, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Yadassito, thank you. Before we go to the board, I just want to, I have a question. Did the fire department, are they able to take a look at the back?
I'm not sure.
That was my question.
Usually, the building department does send to the fire department. I know they did when the, when the variances for the existing pool were done years ago. The pool was initially done 30 years ago, then they bumped out the back of the house, and they needed a variance for the separation. So I know they did look at the 5-foot variance back when, but I don't know if they were out there recently.
Mr. Cahalan, questions, comments?
Yeah, well, I mean, you are building a bigger pool, are you not?
I did the square footage, it's pretty close, because this one is a, is a octagon, and the other one is square, it's less.
But my point, John, is that the, the variance on the new pool covers more of the back fence than the round pool.
It does, but it's also at a much lower elevation.
That's true.
Right now, right now, the pool and the deck are up 4 feet, now we're going to be down at grade, and the fence at the back is 6 feet.
6 feet, right?
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, and I have to ask it, why is the pool equipment where it is?
Around the corner here?
Yeah.
Just so that it's not in the backyard and the noise level?
Are you going to, yeah, the decimals, like?
Well, we're within the required setback for the pool.
But those things make a lot of noise.
I don't know, the newer equipment's a lot quieter than the older.
Unless you live next door to one.
Well, the old equipment was right here, so we just, we just shifted it, shifted it down.
All right. Well, why, is there any way you could keep it, you know, closer to the pool and, and put some landscaping around it, so the neighbor gets some relief?
We could, I mean, we could put landscaping here also. I mean, there's no access to the backyard from this side of the property.
Yeah, I know, I know. I was there, I know. It's hard to get back there.
We could put landscaping along here also. I mean, it would be the same distance from the property line, whether it's here or here.
Okay. It's just a concern with these pools we've had in the past, where they mask their equipment closer to the neighbor than they do the property. So I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, it complies, the pool equipment's compliant.
There's always the compliance and what the right thing to do is, so.
Yeah.
But I'll, that answers my questions.
Nothing further, Mr. Cahalan?
I can keep going if you want.
Your proponent is important, remember. Do you have any more questions?
I'm going to let John off the hook tonight.
Okay, Mr. Conway, anything?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to be heard?
I would like to be heard.
Come forward, name and address for the record, and proceed.
I'm at home now.
Okay.
Okay. I think it's one of these, that one, right? It's, it's this one. Hi, Phil Nemisak, 27 Howard Avenue, I'm a former resident at 24 Douglas Place, where I moved in 1966 and moved around the corner in 1996. Um, I'm also a member of the planning board. Uh, and I've, I've discussed, the issues I'm about to discuss with the chairman of the planning board who lives directly behind this house, that's James Bonanno. Um, I have no problem with Mr. Palumbo's pool. He's had that pool for a long time. He's always used it responsibly, you know, the, the noise issue in terms of, uh, the noise that's generated, you know, sometimes they play a little music or something, they're pretty responsible about that. I can't, no, no complaint there. Believe it or not, the reason I'm here is, much like the Lorax, I'm here to speak for a particular tree, which I view from my backyard, which is in this, I, I just want to make sure this tree is not disturbed. I don't know if you guys actually have any, you, you've spoken about the, the neighbors and all of that. Well, I, I have some photos here of the particular tree that I'm talking about.
Would you, would you put them up on the, please, we'd like to, oh, make copies as well, okay.
There you go. Yes. What would you like to present for this end?
Please speak into the microphone.
Yes.
All right, lady.
No singing.
No.
Well, wow. That's a beautiful tree.
This is the view from my backyard and, believe it or not, I just took these photos because I so enjoyed looking at this tree.
What's the point here?
These are pictures, I believe, April 24th of 2003, 2023, rather, when, you know, the buds were just coming out, and this is from November 10th of last year. Um, and my concern, and I actually spoke with John Yanacido, who I've had a lot of dealings with in my planning board capacity, about what, is, is anything going to be done to disturb this tree? Because right now, the, the pool wasn't above-ground pool. Um, this is a very wet area back here, this tree helps soak up a whole lot of water. Um, and the tree is located right about here, which appears to be in an, at an area that has some sort of, perhaps some sort of patio covering as it is. It's pretty, pretty much in the back corner, and I, I was just looking for some assurances that, A, this tree, and I know it's probably Mr. Palumbo's right to take down this tree if he wants to, it's on his property, but that he won't do so. It's a beautiful tree, it serves a great purpose in terms of soaking up water, privacy, birds, you name it, and it's a beautiful tree. You can see from these undocked photos. Um, so I would expect he's not going to want to take this tree down, but in, in doing construction where you're digging down, you can obviously destroy root systems. So my hope would be, and the reason I'm here, is to call attention to the fact that, A, I would hope that the tree is, is going to be saved, uh, is not going to be taken down, and B, that every reasonable protective measure be taken in the event that this pool is stalled and, you know, you're digging down into this back property so as to preserve this tree. It's a beautiful tree. That's really all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, I'll, Mr. Yanacido will reply in a moment, but I want to see if anyone else is here to speak on this. Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else.
I'll leave those there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to, Mr. Yanacido, go ahead.
We have no plans to move any trees as part of this application.
Okay.
And I believe this tree, this tree may actually be on the neighbor's property.
It's not.
Because the fence steps around it.
Seriously?
Yeah, if you look at the, the existing survey, I'll show it to you right now.
This work can avoid the crosstalk only because it's not going to get picked up, so.
I, I believe this is where the tree is. So here's the existing survey. You see how the fence steps here? I believe it's right, right there.
They don't deal with trees.
I think it's right here.
Will you make, John, Mr. Yanacido, can you just pin that up so?
Sure.
We can make that part of the record?
Yeah, so if we look at, if we look at the survey, this is the, this is the, the last survey that was on file. The fence in the back corner, first of all, the entire fence is on the neighbor's property, so we're going to relocate that onto our, our property. But it does step right here, and the reason the fence steps is there is a big tree, it's a very large tree, it, it appears like it's on his property because the fence steps around and goes onto the neighbor's property, but I think, I believe the straddle's the property line or?
Yep. I, I took, I walked down to the property today, I didn't walk onto the property, I mean, it's literally right around the corner here, and I walked down and it does appear to be squarely within Mr. Palumbo's property.
It's on his side.
On his side of the fence, yeah.
Yeah, but I think the fence is way, you see, it's two feet, two feet beyond the property line.
Well.
But the counter of that.
Whether, whoever's property.
One on top, yes, yeah.
Whoever's property it's on, if it's not hit on his property, he can't take it down.
Right.
If it is on his property, I just ask that, A, he not take it down, and B, that he take appropriate measures in, in either event, when he's doing any construction to, to not damage the tree roots, because that can be fatal to a tree.
Yeah, and definitely, we're not planning to take any trees down, and we can actually add notes to the drawing to provide tree protection for, during construction.
Not using any copper nails, right?
Only in, only in the trees.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, do we need to do anything with the application with respect to this, or is this something that is just going to be noted on the plan after a approval or do not? Then I wouldn't be on anything, but.
Right, so in the event of an approval, um, I would clarify as a condition of approval that the, a note be added to the plan, that tree protection measures around the tree, we can identify it with some specificity, and that tree protection measures will be provided during construction. And just the addition of that note would be the condition.
Great, thank you.
And as part of the application, we're also having a new survey done, because we're going to have the property state to ensure that we meet the requirements of the, either the approval or, or, uh, and we'll have a new as-built survey, and I'll make sure the survey shows that tree on the, on the new survey.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter, is there a second?
Second.
Cahill, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahill?
Nothing.
Mr. Conway?
No questions.
Now, this is one of these applications where when you look at it on paper, it looks, for lack of a better term, ominous, substantial, you know, and we worry about the precedential value of putting improvements, particularly ones that have use and enjoyment factors, like there's noise, et cetera, on a lot line. But when you compare what you have now and what you, and what is going in, and some of the things to minimize, I, um, you know, it may not be as out of the character of the neighborhood as I initially thought, so, you know, I think you straddle that line on the five-part test. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this for resolution at the next meeting, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on our calendar.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 15 Hunter Drive.
I have you. Could it have worked?
Yeah, I'll show, I'll show it to Mr. Conway.
Okay, last item, 15 Hunter Drive. Mr. Yanacido, you're on this application?
Yes.
Okay, proceed.
Good evening again, my name is John Yanacido, I'm an architect and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Gorgliamella, the owners of the subject property. Uh, we are proposing an addition and alterations to the existing single-family residence located at 15 Hunter Drive. Uh, the proposed scope of work will be, uh, the construction of a second-story addition over the existing, uh, first-story footprint, which is highlighted here in the hatched area, uh, and the construction of a covered, uh, front porch, which is highlighted in yellow here in the front. Uh, the existing property is currently, uh, non-conforming with respect to the total impervious, uh, surface coverage. Uh, the proposed porch addition will increase, uh, the existing non-conforming coverage by 304 square feet. Uh, we are requesting an area variance for the total impervious surface coverage, where[1617.23]